Call this meeting to order, the York County School Board Regular Meeting for September 23rd, 2019. Welcome everyone. Mr. Medford cannot be here this evening. He has some work commitments he's dealing with right now. But we're having a great start to our new school year and I hope everyone is getting back to the routine after the summer break that we've had. And I'm going to now ask our pledge leader, Owen Blanton, to step forward while I'll share some information about him. So Owen is a 5th grade student who has attended Seaford Elementary School since kindergarten. In addition to being a model citizen, he has earned the honor roll every marking period. Good job. His favorite subject is math because it's fun discovering solutions to problems. Owen is committed to making a difference in his community, participating in K Kids Club, Cub Scouts, and his church community Zion United Methodist. He enjoys playing basketball, soccer, swimming, and martial arts. Owen would like to follow his family's footsteps and attend the University of Virginia where he hopes to play basketball and study engineering. So if everyone will please stand while he leads us in the pledge.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, thank you. So now we're going to move into our awards and presentations. And as a reminder, there'll be a photo opportunity at the end. We'll take a short break in our meeting and there'll be an opportunity to take some good photos up front here for family members. So we're going to start with our seniors of the month and our first one is Bruton High School and that's Ms. Haywood.
I do thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to introduce to you Ava Fythe from Bruton High School. Ava, if you're here with Mom and Dad, Mr. and Mrs. John and Janet Fythe, did I say that correctly? Please everybody stand if anybody else with you. Does Grandma?
Grandma.
Please stand. Yes. Brother and sister, the whole family, right? Bruton High School proudly acknowledges the accomplishments of one of our finest scholars and athletes, Ava Fythe. Ava is an ambitious and disciplined student who always gives 110% to every assignment and task that she is given. Ava always looks forward to improving herself through learning and is never afraid to take the next step towards success. She is a relationship builder and works to help others in her school and her community. Ava is a member of the National Honor Society and has received numerous awards, academic high honors awarded all three years, Most Outstanding AP United States History Student, varsity girls soccer MVP Award in 2017 and 2018, girl soccer region 2A, all-region team during her 9th and 10th grade years. During the two years that Ava was a member of the Bruton varsity soccer team, she set a new scoring record for the number of scoring goals in a year. At the conclusion of her second season, Ava committed to play Division 1 soccer at Virginia Tech. She's an outstanding runner who participates in cross-country and track. She qualified for state competition during the past two seasons. Additionally, Ava works in our community as an animal shelter volunteer, junior volunteer at Centera Williamsburg Physical Therapy Department, assistant elementary summer school teacher, and youth soccer referee. In each of these experiences, Ava brings her calm, patient demeanor and always looks out for those in need. Ava has accepted the offer to play soccer at Virginia Tech and will begin college in January 2020 to major in Systems Biology. Please join me in congratulating Ava for the senior of the month from Bruton High School for September.
Thank you. So next, we're going to introduce the senior of the month from Grafton High School and I have that one and that's Jackson Jackson Amir Shaheen. Jackson, if you could stand up with your family. There you go. See your father here, your stepfather, your mom? Perfect. Anybody else? It's everybody? Okay. Good, good.
It's with great pleasure that I share with you Grafton Senior of the Month, Jackson Jackson Amir Shaheen. Jackson truly embodies what it means to be a Grafton Clipper but always by always acting in a safe manner. Coming with a positive attitude each day, acting with integrity no matter what the situation is and being a leader both in and out of the building. You can always count on Jackson to greet you with a smile, ask how are your days going, and take a genuine interest in you as a person. Jackson has a huge heart and gives back to both his school and community. Jackson uses his membership and school organizations to give back to the community. He's a member of the Spanish Honor Society and serves as a tutor to help other students master the Spanish language. Jackson is also a member of the History Honor Society where he has given his time with the club to visit local historical organizations helping to clean and organize artifacts. As a member of the Special Olympics Club, Jackson hopes to promote respect and equality for all students and participates and helps plan inclusive activities. Jackson has also served as a volunteer at Warwick Forest Senior Center as well. Jackson is a member of our Competition Cheer Team where he has helped the team earn the state title three years in a row and hopes of bringing home a fourth state title in his senior year. I hope so too. Good luck to you in that. So Jackson also splits his time by working with children in the community at the YMCA and Jackson has worked there for over a year and a half where he had served as a camp counselor and gymnastics instructor and organized various events and parties. While in training, he was honored with the Counselor and Training Counselor of the Year Award. One of Jackson's favorite Grafton memories was winning the Competition Cheer State Championship for the third year in a row and he was so proud of both himself and his team and it truly showed that you can make anything happen when you work together. We're so proud and honored to have Jackson serve as a role model for all of our Clippers because of students like Jackson, we're truly the Clipper family and we couldn't be happier to honor Jackson tonight. Congratulations.
So our next senior of the month is from TAB High School, Dr. George.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Richardson. It's my privilege this evening to introduce the TAB High School Senior of the Month, John McCauley. John, are you here? There we go. And I think your parents, John and Jennifer McCauley? Great. John McCauley is an outstanding example of an involved senior who promotes the best interest of his teams, his NJROTC unit and his school within the community. Responsible and dependable, John is lauded by his teachers as possessing exemplary integrity and dedication to service for others. In all that he does, John is reluctant to promote himself but eager to contribute to the success of a program. John is serving TAB NJROTC unit for his fourth year. This year, he will serve as the Chief of Staff supporting well over 100 cadets and eight staff members. He is also a varsity athlete who is on the cross-country team and soccer team. Both teams have made deep runs into the region and state levels. Outside of TAB, John is active in his church and has served as a camp counselor for the past several summers at the Jamestown 4-H Camp. In all that he does, John gives the very best of himself in a humble manner. He leads by example and has earned the respect of his peers and teachers. When talking about John, the words terrific and excellent come up a lot. He is unselfish and will never seek this type of recognition, which is one of the very reasons he is receiving it. We are very proud to present John McCauley as the September Senior of the Month for TAB High School. Congratulations.
All right. Next, we have York High School's Senior of the Month, which I'm going to read, and that's Shay Cooper with David and Denise Cooper, her parents. Are they here? Stand up. Oh, there they are over here. Perfect. So York High School is delighted to announce Shay Cooper as the September Senior of the Month. Those who know Shay describe her as hardworking, driven, and dedicated. Shay has always shown strong interest in her academics and being involved in her school community. Throughout her time at York High School, she has been a member of the Youth Volunteer Corps, the Latin Club, the Student Council Association, the Latin National Honor Society, and the Photography Club. The Student Council Association has been her primary activity for the past four years. Shay has served as the freshman class secretary, junior class secretary, SCA class representative, and this year she was elected to the Student Council Association President. Volunteering is truly a passion of Shay's. She has volunteered throughout the York community in different events. Shay has participated in a program called Kid Craze at her church, Waters Edge, serving as a program leader. And in this role, she worships with elementary age children every Sunday and teaches them lessons. This past year, she was able to assist with the Stuff the Bus for West toy drive and saw firsthand how a small gesture can truly impact someone's life. Shay, we're proud to have you as part of the Falcon family. It's students like you that make York High School the school it is today. Congratulations and keep soaring. All right. Next, we're going to move into our Student Service Awards and I'm going to give Dr. Shandor a chance to get down to the front. But before that, I see we have a scout in the audience back in the back. I don't mean to put you on the spot, but you can just tell me what troop you're from.
226.
226. I was with 226 back a few years ago with my son. As a scout leader, not as a scout. But good job. And you're here, I'm assuming, working on one of your merit badges.
That's right.
Perfect, perfect. Well, welcome and thank you. All right. We're going to move on to our Student Service Awards and first we have, Mr. Higginbotham, you have the first one.
Yes, I have both of them.
Both of them, okay. Go ahead.
Okay. So the first one is Quinton Olivo. If you can come forward with family. From Seaford Elementary. Quinn is a 4th grader and a proud Seaford Bulldog. He's dedicated his life to community service, advocating for the rights of others, and promoting awareness for Down Syndrome. His community service includes volunteering for Good Deeds Day through the United Jewish Community of the Virginia Peninsula. Inspired by West Save the Bay Day and Seaford Elementary's Annual Garden Cleanup Day, he participated in planting pinwheel gardens in the community for child abuse prevention and awareness for the past four years and has been involved in holiday activities to support children being served through Child Development Resources and Jewish Family Services at Christmas and Hanukkah. He and his family have hosted a counselor from Israel in their home for the past seven summers teaching them about Down Syndrome. Quinn's advocacy and awareness activities include being a team captain for the annual Down Syndrome Awareness or Down Syndrome Association of Hampton Roads DSAHR fundraising event and DSAHR representative for the Hampton Road Show and holiday parades. Leading classroom activities each year for World Down Syndrome Day Awareness, Runway Model for Down Syndrome Association of Greater Richmond, and Virginia Beach Story Exchange Mode. Quinn also served as a self-advocate guest at Eastern Virginia Medical School Grand Rounds and Old Dominion University Department of Special Education. Quinn was the first-place winner of the 2019 Seaford Science Fair and has danced and performed in over 25 community productions to include Suzical the Musical, Disney Junior Aladdin, Alice in Wonderland, and Peter and the Wolf. Recently, he performed with the Virginia Symphony Orchestra and also appeared as one of the faces of self-advocacy in the National Down Syndrome Society's 21st Anniversary Video in Times Square, New York City. He exemplifies the positive experience a passionate, hard-working, and caring individual can make in the world. Please join me in congratulating Quinn.
Quinn, you sure know how to work a room. Great job, great job. Go ahead.
Next, from Grafton High School is Hannah McAllister. If you can come up, please. It is my pleasure to recognize Hannah McAllister as Grafton High School's recipient of the Student Service Award. Hannah has a passion for giving to the community and looking for ways to help people of all ages in any way. Hannah has been both a participant and a leader for 10 years at her local church where she serves as a camp leader for students. She coaches the students, leads small group sessions, and provides both an exciting and safe environment for the students while there. Hannah was one of a select few who applied and was selected to volunteer at VIMS for one week during the summer. During this week, she worked with 5th grade students, taking them on different adventures, visiting different parks, and exploring marine science together. Hannah participates in mission trips where she packs meals for the homeless and helps to build homes. Hannah was both excited and nervous about this adventure as she learned how to use power tools for the first time.
Good job.
Hannah was a part of the National Youth Gathering in Minnesota where she came together with students from across the nation to work collectively on a service project where they worked to prepare meals for the Feed My Starving Children. During the month of September, Hannah works to raise money to donate to childhood cancer research through Alex's Lemonade Stand Foundation. She is a talented artist and sells paintings, stickers, and art prints on Instagram to raise money to donate. Last year, Hannah painted over 20 personalized paintings and was able to donate over $250 to the foundation. The foundation is close to her and her family's heart and she will continue to use her artwork to help raise money to donate to the foundation. Hannah is active in her school and has participated in community events through the National Honor Society and the Music Honor Society, TRIAM, where they performed in nursing homes and local elementary schools. Hannah is a member of the Special Olympics Club where she works to help promote inclusiveness and was a part of an activity at the local YMCA where she assisted students with special needs and helped them experience what it is like to swim. Hannah's leadership continues with serving as the flute section leader for the past two years and the JV soccer captain for two years. Hannah is passionate about helping people and looks to pursue a career where she can bring her passion to other people. We are so proud to recognize Hannah tonight with this honor. Please join me in congratulating Hannah.
Great job. So next, we're going to move into our Community Volunteers of the Month and our first one is Dr. George. You have.
Yes, thank you. I'd like to congratulate Ms. Stephanie Hoover this evening, Principal Ms. Barbara Nagel. And I believe Stephanie's husband is here on her behalf. Ms. Hoover joined the Seaford family three years ago. She is a proud military wife and mother of Hayden, a 2nd grader, Ryland, a kindergartner. She values the partnership between families and school and has volunteered countless hours to make a difference for students, teachers, and families. Ms. Hoover is serving in her second year as Seaford's PTA President. Last year, she organized several successful events to include a science fair in which 98 students in the pre-K through 5th grade created and presented science projects, Seaford's Walk-a-Thon raising over $31,000 for the school, Try It Tuesdays in which she introduced students to healthy choices for snacks during lunch, and a Family Fun and Fitness Night. We congratulate Ms. Stephanie Hoover as Volunteer of the Month. Thank you, Ms. Hoover.
And Ms. Haywood?
Thank you. I have the honor of introducing to you Courtney Engel from Grafton High School. If she will come forward with Principal Whitney Cattaldo, please. We are so pleased to be able to take this opportunity to recognize one of Grafton High School's most dedicated and hard-working parent, Courtney Engel. Courtney is a woman of action. If she sees something that needs to be done, she not only brings it to our attention, but she is right there to spearhead it and make it happen. Courtney always has the best of interests of our students, our teachers, and our school. You can see her at any event, whether it is a PTSA meeting, back-to-school night, open house, football games, in the cafeteria for red and blue crew, in our teacher's lounge selling spirit wear, or working the concession stands. She is everywhere. Last year, we found ourselves in a tough spot with a vacancy midway through the year for our PTSA president and Courtney was right there to step up to the plate, take on the challenge, and allow us to continue to have a strong, supportive, and active PTSA. Courtney's worked with our Booster Club. Courtney works with our Booster Club and is at every event promoting Grafton Spirit and making sure everyone has the opportunity to purchase Grafton Spirit wear. At any time we need Courtney's help or have an idea, she is right there brainstorming ways that we can make it happen. She is proactive and always reaching out to make sure the PTSA or the Booster Club can be a part of Grafton's events and help promote the Clipper family. We are truly blessed with such a caring and passionate parent at Grafton High School. Thank you, Courtney, for always going above and beyond to ensure Grafton is not just a school, but a family and a community. Please join me in congratulating Courtney Engel as Volunteer of the Month.
So next, we have the York Foundation for Public Education presentation.
I do indeed. And as I call your name, if you will come up forward, please. Congratulations to Owen, 5th grade at Seaford for reciting the Pledge of Allegiance. We would also like to recognize tonight's Student Service Award recipients, Quinn and Hannah. They will come forward. And also our seniors of the month, Ava from Bruton, Jackson from Grafton, John from TAB, and Shay from York High. Special gifts from Cookie Tex and Edible Tweet are being presented tonight on behalf of the York Foundation for Public Education in partnership with their donor, Jeannie Fioka of Cookie Tex and Edible Tweet. A Walmart gift card is also being presented on behalf of a foundation supporter. And with us tonight as a board member from the foundation is Dr. Kermit Ashby who's giving out all of the goodies. Please again join me in congratulating all of our award winners.
Great job. And while Dr. Shandor comes back up to the front, I'd just like to say we have some great students with our division, some great volunteers, and this is just the tip of the iceberg. We recognize them all throughout the year and we're very fortunate here in York County to have the talent that we have and the help that we have. We're going to see some more of that with our accidental academics. We're going to hear some from some of our students. So I'm going to turn that over to Dr. Shandor.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson. Good evening. This evening, Bethel Manor Elementary School, they're going to be our presenters this evening. So they began the Career Cafe Program as an opportunity for students to meet various members of the community and learn about their career journeys in a small group setting. To share more about the program and introduce the presenters is, I don't know whether to call him Dr. or chef tonight, but Dr. David Wrights, Bethel Manor Elementary Principal. Dr. Wrights.
Good evening, Chairman Richardson, Vice Chairman George, board members, and Dr. Shandor. This evening, you have a reservation at the Bethel Manor Career Cafe. And we hope your dining experience leaves you with a better understanding of how we use Career Cafes to supplement the YCSD College and Career Readiness Curriculum while providing many menu options for students to explore future opportunities. If you take a look at the menu you've been provided, you can follow along with our slides. Career Cafe is an opportunity for students to meet various members of our community and learn about their career journeys. Our goal is to include speakers from all 16 career clusters as listed under your appetizers section of your menu because this is where we begin to develop our Career Cafe. Mrs. Carducci, our fabulous guidance counselor, is going to share with you a little bit more about how the program is set up at Bethel Manor and the benefits to this program.
Good evening, board members. Dr. Shandor, many of you may remember participating in a career fair at some point, whether as a parent, a student, an educator, or a presenter. A cafeteria full of community members with booths out and stops for a minute or two at everyone. We wanted to take this idea of career exploration and make it more purposeful and personal in the way that we use a Career Cafe. Students are invited to Career Cafe based on their career interests and attend during their lunch block in a small group setting. Because of the small group size, students are able to ask more questions and have a more hands-on experience while providing student choice of careers that interest them. So we have today a few previous 5th graders from Bethel Manor who wanted to come and share their personal experiences of Career Cafes last year. So first, we have Jimmy Mullins.
What I liked about Career Cafe was choosing the job that I wanted to learn more about. I chose to learn about the sheriff deputies. We had lunch with them and they showed us their taser. That was my favorite part. We also learned about the other gadgets that they use. Something I learned that I didn't know was that they don't just handle human conflicts, but they also handle wild animals. I really enjoyed Career Cafe and learning about the sheriff deputies.
And next, we have Eli Mullins. Come on up.
What I liked about Career Cafe was seeing all the different jobs and possible jobs I could do when I grew up. It was easy to choose from the list and the career I chose was a sheriff's deputy. My favorite part about hanging out with them was when they showed us their different gadgets that they use. My favorite gadget was the taser. They told us about training, different training they have to do to become a sheriff deputy, and about the different things they do on occasions. I didn't know that the deputies have to do a special training with the weapons. I enjoyed learning about the sheriff deputy's job in Career Cafe. It was exciting and interesting.
Excellent job. Thank you. And now we have Cecile Beauchez.
At Career Cafe, I was able to choose from many presentations and I picked Mr. Minnie's because it sounded interesting and reminded me a lot of my dad. I liked that Mr. Minnie passed around objects and tools from his jobs like welding gloves, his helmet, and a piece of equipment that he said was a little piece of a big machine. Mr. Minnie explained to us how the materials were used and how they were important in the welding process. It was also a small group, so all of us were able to have enough time to look at everything he passed around. He asked a lot of questions that led to the next topic in his presentations. We also played a game related to the job. For the game, for the game, he gave us a paper with the American flag and we had to color it with both hands in less than two minutes. It was hard to use both hands at the same time, but I enjoyed the whole presentation including the game. My recommendations for students that go to the future Career Cafes is to pick something that makes you curious. My advice for the presenters is that if you have objects and materials to show that we can see and touch, in my experience, that is so much better. Also, to present something that you are passionate about. There may be many of us who will be amazed about your job and will want to do it in the future.
Great job, students. Thank you very much. So Cecile talked to you about Mr. Minnie and he's actually here this evening and he's going to talk to you about his experiences coming to our Career Cafe at Bethel Manor. Mr. Minnie?
Good evening. As stated, my Career Cafe was about welding and expanding job opportunities in the welding field. Some of the key points that I spoke on were how welding impacts many different products from submarines to space shuttles to energy and infrastructure. I brought some of the tools of the trade and safety equipment for the students to interact with. I also talked briefly about the apprentice school and the unique opportunity it provides. I shared about my new position in the shipyard as a quality analyst. At the end of the activity, where students learned about procedures and where they were asked to complete an activity with the guidelines I provided. I had them color the American flag and they were only allowed to use the red crayon in the right hand and the blue crayon in their left hand and they couldn't put the crayons down at any time. With so many future positions in the trades, it was a great, it was great to be able to use. to be able to share with the students about a career opportunity they may not have known about. Uh, it was exciting to share with the students what I do, and I encourage others to get involved and share their passions with, uh, future generations.
Thank you, Mr. Minnie. So as you can see, the program provides career awareness and exploration opportunities for our students, as stated in the YCSD Strategic Plan Goal Number Two. As we prepare for career awareness opportunities this year, we would like to invite other community members to partner with YCSD through our Engaged in Career Connections. For more information, please visit yorkcountyschools.org/engagedin. Now if you will, please flip your menus over. I will leave you with this. Don't ask students what they want to be when they grow up, but what problems they want to solve. This changes the conversation from who do I want to work for to what do I need to learn to be able to do that? Thank you.
Well, thank you for that presentation. Um, that's just an excellent way to, to enhance our strategic goals that we're, we're trying to, to solve and expose our students to different careers, especially at an early age, so they can explore a lot more before they have to make some decisions later on in their schooling. So, great job, great job.
Very unique concept with the cafe. Very much so. Uh, do we keep these or are we giving back to you?
They are yours to keep.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you. Thank you. Thank you again, great job. So now the board will take a short recess so we can meet tonight's award recipients, and you'll be able to take a few photos, so we're just in a short recess. Thank you. All right, we're going to reconvene this meeting, and we're going to get started with our unfinished business, which I believe we have none.
We do not.
And we're going to move on to our presentation, so Capital Project Report. Dr. Shandor.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson. I'm going to ask Mr. Mark Shearhart, Associate Director for Capital Plans, if he'll come up to the podium and present this month's Capital Projects Report. Mr. Shearhart.
Mr. Chairman, Members of the Board, and Dr. Shandor, here's your Capital Projects Report for the month of September. The first project I'd like to touch on is Grafton Middle and High School. This is the HVAC replacement and the middle school, and the main office's reorientation. So the project update is there, the contractors are continuing to work on punch list items in the building. We're obviously in the building, uh, and they are also making preparations for the permanent generator installation in back of the building. As you know, this, this last summer, we focused on the high school in the center of the building, and next summer, the 2020, we'll focus on the middle school and the high school band room. This is a picture of what the, uh, middle school entrance looks like now. The, you can see the, the beautiful new offices on the left-hand side there. That was a red brick wall before, a red CMU block wall before, uh, and you can see the, um, the wood soffits above there, which will have lights eventually, uh, next summer. There's a air conditioning unit above the ceiling, and that'll be taken out, and they can put the arched ceiling in the middle school entrance next summer, which will look something similar to this here. So that's the high school entrance now. You can see the arched ceiling there and the soffit lighting. Uh, it makes it a very, very welcoming entrance to the high school there at Grafton Complex. This is an area here at the back of the building where they're, uh, preparing for installing the permanent generators there. They've cleared off the top soil, they're putting down some stone and then some, uh, concrete there. Uh, the gray pipes sticking up out of the ground there are going to handle the wires going from the building to the generators. Next project is Coventry Elementary School, and their contractor has completed setting ninety-eight, ninety-seven percent of the roof panels there. There's just one little, one little corner they have to finish up. Uh, they finished, they're finishing up metal trim work, gutters and downspouts now, and doing some vertical siding inside the mechanical well. The final completion there is scheduled to be December 30th. Here's a picture, I wanted to show you what before and after pictures look like of the roof. In the, in the distance, you can see the new roof, the dark, darker blue, and in the foreground, you can see underneath the metal framing there how, how the old, original roof looked. It was definitely in need of replacement there. And then here's the same courtyard with all the roof panels installed. The next project is Dare Elementary School Breezeway, and the contractors there have poured part of the foundations and part of the concrete floor there. They've also began installing the concrete block walls, which is CMU, which are concrete masonry units. Uh, they've installed those. You can see here, uh, the part of the concrete floor they've installed, and then you can see that on both sides there, you can see the, the concrete block walls going up. Mount Vernon is another elementary school that we're doing a breezeway enclosure. Uh, right now, the contractors installed the library solo tubes. They've poured the concrete foundations and flooring there. Uh, they've also, uh, constructed the CMU walls to a bearing height, and they've set most of the steel roof joists, which, uh, actually, they finally, they, they finished up today, this afternoon, they're installing the roof joists. So this is a picture of the top of the library there, the roof of the library, and you can see the wall on the right-hand side, that wall actually blocked off all the windows that the library had to the outside, which brought in the daylight. And so, to compensate for that, we, we installed the solo tubes on the roof there. These, these solo tubes will collect daylight and then distribute it inside the library. We did the same type of setup at, uh, York Elementary School, and it made a big difference in the library, getting that daylight into the library. Here's a picture of the roof joists being installed. You can see the, uh, bearing heights there on the, on the left-hand side, the little pockets in the, in the concrete block wall. That's, uh, where they set the, set the joists at, so that's the bearing, the roof bears on those, on those points. And, uh, that's what, that's, uh, again, where they're installing that. They're getting close to putting the roof, metal roof decking on there, and then they put the roof on top of the building.
Mr. Shearhart, just a quick question on that photograph. Is that all hallway, or will that include a couple of office spaces?
The, the hallway will be on the left-hand side, and on the right-hand side, there will be a couple of, uh, a storage room in a, in a small office and a, uh, small workroom.
Okay. Thank you.
TAB Middle Schools is the next project I'd like to focus on, and this is, uh, they've installed all the metal roof panels there, and they're right now in the process of working on the metal, metal roof panels, some trim work and some gutters and downspouts there. They've started working on the louver repairs, they're pulling out their louvers and doing some repair work there, and then putting the louvers back in, so they started on that work last week. Here's what the front of TAB Middle School looks like. It looks very fresh and inviting, you know, with a new roof on there. Uh, it just definitely made a different, different to the appearance, difference to the appearance. And then here, standing on top of the roof, taking a look across the top of multiple roofs there at TAB Elementary, TAB Middle School, you can see the metal panels are installed on the roofs. The last project I'd like to touch on is the Learning Commons at York High School, and the contractor has installed the heating and air conditioning units and the ductwork there. They're in the process of installing the aluminum framing for the windows, and in fact, they've already started installing some of the windows. The ceilings and everything, ceilings, walls, and ductwork have been painted, they're installing the casework. The substantial completion date of this is October 11th, uh, and the final completion is October 25th. We, the furniture is a little bit in question, there, it's supposed to be arriving after October 14th. So this is the architect's rendering of what the, uh, Learning Commons would look like at York High School, and this is the way it looked last week on September 19th. And that's my last project for this evening. Do you have any questions for me?
It's nice seeing the schools get the breezeways. They make very, very nice.
That's going to be very useful, very useful. Kids don't have to walk outside anymore. We've got some extra storage space, some extra offices there, extra meeting spaces.
And Mr. Shearhart, I noticed you're walking with a boot on. Did you, uh, all this construction just wear your legs out?
No.
It was a lot. I know we had a lot.
It was a lot. I just, I put off doing, put off taking care of myself until those projects were done.
Gotcha. Well, good. Thank you. Thank you for that. Um, but, um, look after yourself, but thank you for everything you're doing for us. Appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Okay. All right, next we have comments of citizens. Uh, this is, uh, public participation in board meetings. Our school board provides public comment period for the public to comment on topics that are germane to the business of the school board, and the board expects a speaker to be courteous remodeling after our students, how one can respectfully disagree with others' views, should that be the case, and we ask the speakers to address their comments to the entire board and not to one individual board member, nor to the superintendent, a staff member, or the audience. Speakers will present their comments from the podium, and each speaker may speak up to three minutes. The timer is visible to the speakers at the podium, and the speakers should conclude their remarks when the red light comes on. As a reminder, school board members do not respond to public comment during the meeting. So we have our first person signed up is Lindsay Cook. If you would come forward and state your name and address, please. And the timer will begin after you do that.
Good evening. I'm Lindsay Cook. I live at 104 Adell Court in Yorktown. We'd like to take this opportunity to address, from a parent's point of view, Dr. Callahan's recent evaluation of the gifted program, as well as changes implemented to location and services for some of our students. Students from Waller Mill and McGruder are no longer receiving pull-out gifted services at the Extend Center, but instead gifted resource teachers are traveling to Waller Mill to provide services to students from both of these schools. Although we are members of the Division's Gifted Education Advisory Committee, GIAC, we want to be clear upfront that we are here this evening on behalf of concerned parents of the gifted students, not as representatives of GIAC. We're closely involved in gifted education and believe we're in a unique position to be aware of what our students need, as well as the impact of changes being made to York County's gifted education program. Back in June, after Dr. Callahan's report was released, we learned the Division's interpretation of the report. Several of us, after having the chance to read the report ourselves, came to our own conclusions regarding what is contained in the report. We got together outside of GIAC to address Dr. Callahan's report on the program review, and while we find her observations enlightening, we also believe that it's impossible for an outside evaluator to gain a complete picture of a Division's educational program with brief school visits and focus groups. We want to make sure that the school board is aware of the parents' reaction to Dr. Callahan's recent evaluation, as well as to the changes that have taken place this school year. Of course, we understand that parent input is not always factored into many of the instructional decisions, but we strongly feel that changes in the location and the format of services are significant and should be discussed with stakeholders such as parents prior to their implementation. It was extremely alarming to us that changes of this magnitude were made in both location and the format of services prior to this school year without input from stakeholders, contrary to Dr. Callahan's recommendations and which are not part of the five-year gifted education plan approved by you, the members of the school board. We wanted you to be aware that we have significant concerns about these changes. We'll be following up with each of you via email to fully explain our position, since it wouldn't be possible, given this evening's time constraint. We also want to remind you that GIAC's meetings are public, and we encourage all of you to attend the first meeting of this school year, which will take place on October 22nd at 6:30 PM at the school division office, so that you may hear firsthand all of the pertinent issues regarding gifted education in York County schools.
Okay.
We're grateful for your time. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, the next person we have signed up to speak is David Forrest. You'd state your name and address, and the timer will start once you, uh, state that.
Members of the board, my name is David Forrest. I live at 104 Three Point Court in Yorktown, Virginia, 23692. I'm here to talk about the disconnect between the Facilities Master Plan and the Capitalism Improvements Plan, and how that, uh, got some overcrowded and substandard facilities. Uh, if you're carefully monitoring the enrollments, there wouldn't be such a big, or a difference between the projected enrollments and what you planned for in the CIP, uh, the size of a second additional elementary school. Your current Facility Master Plan, on page eight or so, has, um, the elementary enrollments here. Now, at the out years, it's got this, uh, large difference there. Back in, um, three years ago, 2016, Dr. James spoke with, um, Mr. Medford and the rest of the board, and they spent a long time talking about instructional capacities and how these metrics are good metrics for planning and knowing what's going on, communicating what's going on there. But, um, uh, we've got overcrowded facilities, uh, in the current years, that's not on the part that I'm showing here, but it's in your Facilities Master Plan. But the, um, for the county engineer at Yorktown Elementary School and the other elementary schools all have usable site sizes of less than the four acres per one acre, plus one acre per hundred kids. At Yorktown Elementary, that inadequate lot size forced the decision to trade at one of the hard surface playgrounds for a parking lot. Yes, the inadequate site size forced the decision to get a zoning variance to park the Head Start trailer, uh, over the back building line. You need to do that there. And yes, uh, Yorktown Elementary, it also, uh, forced the decision to park trailer number 14 on top of, uh, the basketball court seat, Yorktown Elementary. Not having the two hard surface play areas is, uh, substandard compared to the State Board of Education guidelines. To avoid these sorts of changes, you need to plan ahead to cover those projections. Your Facilities Master Plan says that's your mid-range, uh, projections of how enrollments will step through the grades, but there's a disconnect of more than 760 students, students between the expected elementary enrollment in the out years and, uh, the stuff that you've got planned in your CIP. Dr. Shandor says it's a problem of uncertainty. Mr. Green says it's a misunderstanding about the worst-case scenario. Uh, the FM, the Facilities Master Plan document says that it's itself is, uh, the mid-range scenario. Mr. Richardson said, "I don't understand what I've been given." The master plan and the CIP are your plans that show this shortfall. I've given lots of chances to clarify what they mean, but I think you've done a terrible job of, uh, communicating it. Two weeks ago, Dr. Shandor presented the New Year's enrollment statistics and how they predict the, or match the predictions within like 15 students. But those aren't York County predictions of, that's, they're York County prediction stuff, not the...
Thank you very much. Appreciate it, Mr. Forrest. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. That concludes our public comment for this evening. No one else was signed up to make, uh, public comment, so I'm going to close the public comment period, and we're going to move on to matters by board members, and we're going to start with Mr. Higginbotham.
Sure. I know now that there's been a few weeks to get, uh, procedures and expectations going. All the classrooms are, are getting settled, and they're doing great work, and I just want to encourage all the stu-, uh, the teachers to continue to, uh, plan on making, uh, an impact with those students, not just worried about the classroom and the curriculum, but creating an experience for those students to take with them as they go and they grow. Before school started, uh, the Grafton Middle School and High School Complex had, uh, a lot of construction done, and I just want to thank the teams and the teachers, uh, there to, uh, for all their hard work and the extra work that they did, um, leading up to that school year. Many of those teachers and custodial staff, and there were administrators that were in that building that Friday, Saturday, Sunday, and Monday on Labor Day, getting the building ready, and it just looks fantastic. And I just want to thank everyone for the dedication that they gave to be able to open, uh, that complex on time and, uh, have it ready for students coming in that building that first Tuesday morning. And today's the first day of fall, so I want to say happy fall to everyone, and it's my favorite time of the year, as it starts to get colder despite the last couple days. Um, but last week, we had a little bit more fall weather, but I love football as it comes now. And I want to say congratulations to Coach Pereira and staff of the York High School Football Team for their big win. They broke a, what was it, 60-game?
60-game.
Win streak against their opponent that time, so congratulations to that staff and team for that. That's awesome to hear about. And I also was able to spend some time with the York Foundation for Public Education for a, a meeting and greet with some of the donors here, uh, in York County Schools, and I was there with you, Mr. Richardson. We had a good time meeting some people in the community, and I look forward to, uh, working with them in the future.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Haywood?
Thank you. Uh, official welcome back from me. I was gone last month. Uh, uh, got a couple of emails from everybody to say, "Is everything okay?" Well, I was celebrating grandbaby's second birthday, and I don't think, uh, Mr. Richardson shared with everybody where I was, so grandkids make you do strange things. Uh, but anyway, it's, it's good to be back. It is, um, wonderful to know that everybody's off to a, a good school year, and when you look around the state, even locally, and you think about all that goes into the first, the beginning of the school... about all that goes into the first, the beginning of the school year, and to have as few incidents as we've had, it is a true blessing. We off again to a good school year, and I look to see where we are in the next few months, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Haywood. Dr. George?
Yes, once again, welcome back, everyone, and I think it's been a relatively smooth beginning to the year, is that correct, Dr. Shandor, would you categorize it that way?
Yes.
Very good, and that's always, that's always good for all those concerned. Just a couple of things, TAB High School, just want to recognize two National Merit finalists, Nicholas Gu and Maria Stubner, congratulations, kids, students. Back-to-school night is in progress, so check your website, it's all on there posted, and don't miss that, if that pertains to you, I think elementary's up this week, I believe, yeah. So, um, make sure you, you catch that. Just, lastly, I just really was impressed with this career, career cafe with these kids, and I couldn't help but think, you know, this is starting younger and younger, you know, these, these, career exploration, at that age, sort of exploring the concepts of different, different careers and getting the information, you know, that they need to spark that, that interest, and then we carry that through middle school, and we carry it into high school, where you're having the career fairs and the mentorships in high school that are wonderful. So, you know, I certainly didn't have those opportunities when I was that age, and I suspect everybody in here probably never had those opportunities either, but, but it's great, it's a wonderful thing to see, so that just, just really kind of brings home the fact that we're doing some great things for these kids, get every opportunity in the world to have some fulfilling careers, so, thank you.
All right, thank you, Dr. George, and we have a teacher's art exhibit coming up at the school board office on the 30th of this month, in the afternoon, 4:30 in the afternoon, so I'll be present at that, and then on the second, I have my WHRO meeting, where I'm on the board with Dr. Shandor, we'll be at that. But I want to remind everybody that October 4th, next Friday, is our first early dismissal day that we have for the school year, but also, a lot of back-to-school nights. So our back-to-school nights are posted on the website, I want to remind board members, there should be a sheet in your packet that explains all those and has the list of all those, but it can be found on the first page on the website under Find What's Trending, and you'll see the link to the back-to-school nights for all the schools in York County.
If I could add one plug for the, for the York Foundation for Public Education-
Yes.
-will be on the Coast Live on-
Yes.
-Thursday. We have to be there in the studio about 8:30, no later than nine, and be in the audience, so look at Coast Live on Thursday, the 26th.
Excellent. Yeah, I remember you emailing me about that, thank you.
I can, I can go now.
Okay, great, great, thank you, Ms. Haywood.
I didn't think I could, but I can now.
Thank you very much. So next, we're going to move into our financial matters, and I'm going to ask Mr. Higginbotham to discuss financial matters at this time.
Yes, for the consideration of approval of claims certified for payment, we have some claims certified for payment for the month of August 2019. The significant expenditures for August, the instructional-related expenditures totaled $240,000, and included payments to Meredith Alvaro for $32,400 for support of the elementary reading model, Riverside Insights for $26,462 for Iowa online assessments, New Horizons $14,148 for special education tuition, and Remote Learners for $14,580 for renewal of the remote learnings program. Payments related to technology totaled approximately $1.3 million, and this included payments to CDW for $1.1 million to, for the replacement of instructional technology, X2 Development for $94,830 for the renewal of the student information system, Power School for $96,438 for the Performance Matters Assessment Program, and the Virginia Business Systems $34,534 for copiers. Payments related to administration totaled $114,000, included payments to Vaycorp for $88,322 for workers' compensation, WHRO for $25,510 for the public media renewal. Payments related to food service totaled $47,600, and included payments to Sedexo for $17,300 for food service operations, Tyson Foods for $30,300 for USDA food processing. Payments related to construction and maintenance projects totaled $5.34 million for the capital projects that we heard about earlier, for the Grafton Complex, TAB Elementary and TAB Middle, and Dare, Coventry and Mount Vernon Elementary Schools. Payments related to transportation totaled $96,552 for the purchase of one school bus, and payments related to operations totaled $52,800, included payments to Dominion Energy for $35,000, and American Paper for $17,739 for janitorial supplies. Now for consideration of approval of financial reports for August 2019, the significant changes relating the operating budget. For the, for the August revenues, the state revenue from August 2019 is more than $538,000 higher when compared to August of 2018. This increase in state funding is due to approved state funding increases and the student enrollment. The federal revenue from August 2019 is down by more than $448,000 from August 2018, and this is due to the fact that Impact Aid revenue is transferred throughout the year and is not on any particular schedule. For the expenditures, instructional expenditures are approximately $200,000 higher in August of 2019 than in 2018, and this is due to the increase in instructional and support staff required for our growth. The significant changes relating to the food service budget, the food service expenditures are approximately $34,000 higher in August of this year than it was in 2018, and this is in preparation for the start of school and accounting for student participation and growth. And lastly, consideration of approval of Resolution 19-56, which authorizes specific procurement, it requires the board approval for any procurements more than $50,000, and we had eight on this resolution. Four requisitions are related to the capital projects across the division, three requisitions are related to IT to support technology throughout the division, and the last requisition is for a new special education bus. So unless there are any questions, I make a motion to accept financial reports as listed.
Thank you, is there a second? All right, Ms. Ford?
Yes, a motion was made by Mr. Higginbotham, and seconded by Dr. George, to approve the financial matters as listed. You may cast your votes.
Thank you, Ms. Ford. Next, we're going to move into the consent calendar, and the first item on the consent calendar is approval of personnel actions, and we have the approval of donations in the amount of $500. The approval of minutes from the August 26, 2019, and special meeting on September 9, 2019, and the approval of the Special Education Advisory Committee members for 2019, 2020. Is there anything that needs to be pulled from the consent calendar? Hearing that, is there a, is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
I approve, I move to approve the consent calendar as presented.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Haywood, and Dr. George. Ms. Ford?
A motion was made by Mrs. Haywood, and seconded by Dr. George, to approve the consent calendar as listed. You may cast your vote. And Dr. George?
He's not here.
The motion has passed, four to zero, thank you.
Okay, thank you. So next, on our action items, we have approval of a proclamation for Bullying Prevention Awareness Month for October 9, October of 2019, so Dr. Shandor, I'll let you share comments.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson. Over 20% of the youth in the United States are estimated to be involved in bullying each year, either as a bully or as a victim. It is important for parents, students, teachers, coaches, and school administrators to be aware of bullying and to encourage discussion of the problem as a school and community. The month of October 2019 will be recognized as Bullying Prevention Month with the intention that the issue of bullying and its prevention be discussed in all York County schools during that time. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Dr. Shandor. So is there a motion to approve the Proclamation for Bullying Prevention Awareness Month for October?
I move.
Second.
Okay, Ms. Ford?
A motion was made by Dr. George, and seconded by Mr. Higginbotham to pass the vote for Bullying Prevention Month, and you can take, take your vote, please.
Ms. Ford, it's not appearing on my screen.
Okay, Dr. George?
Yes.
The motion has passed, four to zero, thank you very much.
All right, thank you, Ms. Ford. So for policy discussions, first reading and second reading, we have none, so we're going to move on to the report of the superintendents, Dr. Shandor.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson, I'll be brief this evening, just with a few comments. First, as you mentioned earlier, we had a, we enjoyed a great beginning of the school year, in spite of a brief weather challenge, we're on track now and moving forward, so hopefully, we can avoid some of these storms that are lingering out there. Each year, I also remind you to take time to visit your, your child's school during back-to-school nights, so, community members, I hope that you're getting into the schools this week and next week, as we have our back-to-school nights. We want you involved, we want you engaged with your student and the teachers. Finally, I provided an extensive opening of the school report at our August meeting, but just as a real quick recap, over the first couple of weeks of school, I was able to visit all 19 schools, transportation and maintenance, and to greet our new staff and our returning staff and students. Again, I want to thank all the operations staff for their hard work over the summer, preparing over 1.8 million square feet in all the schools for our students, so we're certainly happy to be back and get into the rhythm of, of the school year. Now I have a special introduction, I'm going to ask Ms. Cheryl Parr, if she'll please come forward and bring her to, her two guests with her. So Ms. Parr is our Associate Director of School Administration, and I'm going to introduce a few folks, so Ms. Gwen Lee, Ms. Lee, if you'll please raise your hand. So let's give Ms. Lee just a big round of applause. And also with us this evening is Ms. Tammy Edwards, let's give her a big round of applause. So I want to share just a little bit of information relating, relating to some position changes at Langley Air Force Base. So Ms. Lee has served as the Langley School Liaison Officer for 15 years. Ms. Lee works with Ms. Parr throughout the school, throughout the school year to keep us updated on relevant military topics and events. Ms. Lee is now serving in another role at Langley, and Ms. Edwards has stepped into that position, so, Ms. Lee, we thank you for all of your support and work in the school division. We appreciate all of your dedication and service over the last 15 years, and we wish her the best, and we certainly look forward to working with Ms. Edwards in the days ahead. So again, thank you both, you know how important, obviously, all of us know how important the military is in, in our school system, and you guys play a pivotal role in that, the success of our kids. Thank you very much, we appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
And ladies, if you didn't know it by now, we love surprises, everybody.
Thank you.
This concludes the superintendent's report.
All right, thank you, Dr. Shandor. So our next work session will be on Monday, October 14th at 6:00 PM in the East Room downstairs, and we have no other business, so this meeting's adjourned, have a great week, thank you.